Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too. All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our, what is today? Tuesday, July 14, Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Thanks for being here. Thanks for joining us online. If you're joining us remotely tonight, appreciate it. We'll go ahead and get started tonight. It's nice to see a full dais. I'll just make a note that we had an installation ceremony this afternoon, like to officially welcome Councilor Alex Jensen on third base over there. And so this is his first meeting tonight. We had a great swearing-in ceremony at 2:00. And we also have all of our councilors joining us in person. We've had a lot of remote attendance, so great to have everybody here. So we'll get started by reading our roll, please, Denise.
Councilmember Sale?
Here.
Star?
Here.
Brecky?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Kylie?
Here.
Nitzer?
Here.
Selberg?
Here.
All right. With us this evening to give our invocation is Reverend Martell Espanolo, Senior Pastor. How'd I do? Espanolo. It's at First Congregational Church here in Sioux Falls. Martell's a great guy. He's also a chaplain for Sioux Falls Fire Rescue and provides that service to our team there. So Martell, thanks for your work-
My pleasure.
-with those folks. So I'd ask you to rise for the invocation and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Gracious God, Your prophet and Your Apostle Paul tells us to greet one another with a kiss, a holy kiss. In this time of COVID and time of face masks, I guess that's not the best thing. So let us consciously be aware of the people around us. Let us be thankful for those who are with us. And although we may not choose to embrace or to kiss, we will remember that You tell us to greet one another with a kiss. Gracious God, in Philippians 2, You tell us that Your Son, Jesus Christ, was although equal with You, does not strive to be equal with You, and chose instead to take the place that is lower, so that all may be one. He didn't grasp at equality. He didn't revel in glory. May our council choose to do that which Jesus did. May they choose to use their privilege and their place to better the lives of all of Your people. Bless this council and keep them ever vigilant to serve You by serving the people of this beautiful and wonderful city. And we ask this in the name of Jesus, who is one with you and the Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You are the only participant in this conference. Press any key to continue this conference.
All right. So we got a little surprise, surprise, tonight. So, as you know, it was a lot of work to get through the last election cycle because of COVID, because of having to move the election, because of recounts, because of the nature of recounts and how much work goes into that process. There is a lot of work in that. And there is a gentleman who's sitting right here named Tom Greco, who put in a lot of work to keep the integrity of our election between the ditches. And he put in a lot of hours, a lot of energy, and a lot of time to make that happen. And so we have what we call challenge coins in the city of Sioux Falls that we give out to recognize people who embody the core values of the city. And one of those core values is character. And you maybe also know that Tom is a former military guy, as is, this is a Colonel, he's a Lieutenant Colonel. They like to point that out. So he ranks higher, and I'll just save you from having to say that, but okay. But it's always great to have men and women of service in city government because, you know, their integrity is top shelf. And so, Tom, I'd like you to come up here. I'd like to present you with this coin for all the work you did to ensure the integrity of our city elections. It was a lot of work. I hope we never have to go through those challenges again because it was a hard process. But you instilled a lot of faith in our residents, that our elections are sound, they're run well because of all the work that you and the others did. So-
That we do. We'll be ready.
We'll be ready. You bet. There you go, young man. Give him a round of applause, please. A nice jacket. All right. All right. On that note, we'll go ahead and dive into our meeting. We'll start with item number five, which is our consent agenda. Look for any changes or motion there.
Move to approve.
Mr. Mayor. Councilors, let's get a second, and then Councilor Erickson.
Great.
Excuse me, Councilor Starr.
That's okay. I would move to remove item number 13 under Human Resources. It's sub-item 13 in the list of contracts.
Okay. Item 13 removed. Any other changes?
And if we could, because this is a similar item to number 17 on our agenda, if we could take this after item 17?
Sure. So noted. So we'll discuss item 13 pulled from the contracts to discuss after item 17 on the agenda. Got that, Denise? All right. Any other changes to the consent agenda? All right. See none. We got a motion, a second, so we'll vote on it, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes. All right. That passes eight to zero. We'll move on to our regular agenda approval,
item nine. Look for a motion on that.
Move to approve.
Second, Erickson.
All right. Motion by Kylie, seconded by Erickson on that. Any discussion on that, council? All right. Let's vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. We're now on to the general public input portion of our agenda tonight. As a reminder, input during this portion will last no more than three minutes per person, and a total lasts no more than 30 minutes. During general public input, the public is welcome to speak on any topic that does not appear later on the agenda. For regular agenda items following general public input, comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. And at this time, I'd like to invite any members of our public forward for general public input. Clerk, please note our time right now is 7:08. Good evening.
Sarah Bruce, Sioux Falls. Counselor Jensen, I want to tell you and everybody that voted for Mr. Jensen, and I want you all to look me in my eyes. He voted in peer for discrimination against the LGBT community. South Dakota is back behind times on this. Mr. Jensen, I hope and I pray by talking to your colleagues and peer, you had plenty of time to look over that, that ruling that you made that discriminated against transgender youth in schools.
Sarah, Sarah, it's important to note that public input-
Don't interrupt me. It is also important-
You're violating the rules of this body, which is you do not address a single person, but the council as a body. Just address the council as a body.
And we have. And so we need to be on top of crime. And Mr. Jensen and everybody else needs to be on top of everybody and not just your rich people here. And I'm going to state for the record, because it is for the record, that he did, what he did in peer was a track record. And so I have every right to talk about that, Mayor. So don't interrupt me no more.
You do, ma'am, but you cannot address a counselor directly.
Second of all, I want to address this issue on crime in neighborhoods.
Point of order. I would ask that the Speaker at least listen to the mayor when the mayor is making a point.
And I'm doing nothing illegal.
You know what? That is the decorum policy. So that's the policy of this body. I am done with your shenanigans at this meeting. You are done. You are done. Thank you. Anyone else for public input tonight?
Good evening, councilors. I'd just like to make a minor correction to some previous statements that were made. Governor Dugard vetoed the legislation that was mentioned, and Counselor Jensen voted to uphold that veto and saying that wasn't the right policy for South Dakota. Mr. Jensen is very accepting and encouraging to all people, and I hope we will see that as a new body that you guys have tonight, and hopefully you guys will see that.
Can you state your name?
My name is Matt Paulson. I live in Sioux Falls.
Thank you, Matt. Anyone else this evening?
Good evening. Greetings. I'm David Zalkitis, and I must admit, I have a difficult topic for tonight. But just because it's difficult doesn't mean we need to shy away from it. Bad things happen, and they do need to be addressed. So this story starts a couple of years ago. I was in the Sioux Falls Airport, watched some poor guy getting felt up by the TSA, and that's just not all right. So I made a big deal about it. Talked to a nearby police officer, asked him to check into it, and he didn't do very much. The nearby Homeland Security Officer gave me a whole lot of grief for complaining about sexual assault. Not okay. So I made it all the way to Pittsburgh, talked to a TSA guard there, and he promptly threatened me with physical violence. And of course, that's not okay either. And the cop next to him said, "All right." Crazy, crazy. Got out to the parking lot, figured none of this is okay, called the police. The first officer there pretty much ignored me because I apparently can't file more than one complaint. Somebody else was there for intimidation purposes, tried to give me a hard time. And I was not free to go from filing a complaint until I quoted case law. What in the road is going on? So I made it to Pittsburgh or home and then filed some complaints. No response. Crazy. So what did I conclude from this experience? Well, I saw the TSA commit sexual assault, probably racially motivated. I saw the Sioux Falls Police protect the TSA. I saw Pittsburgh Police lie and intimidate me. And this thin blue line that we hear about, it appears to be a concrete wall and not a thin blue line. And these people that take a solemn oath to uphold the Constitution, you can't believe them. And if you ever question somebody's dogma, be prepared for a nasty response. So I found this quote that you may be familiar with. It's from the McCarthy era, talking about decency. Well, and whatever happened to decency in American government? I think we've got some work to do. And as always, used to find something to enjoy, so life is a little happier. And here's a scene along the Big Sioux River. So with that, good evening, everybody.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, sir.
My name is Chris Cooper. Hello, I'm going to share some of my thoughts on the subject of affordable housing. One recent public activist speaker noted that we have economic segregation in Sioux Falls. I've had similar thoughts. New neighborhoods are developed with similarly valued homes, with legal bars prohibiting less expensive homes. Part of the solution to affordable housing is to get the law out of the way. Apart from restricting exclusionary covenants, the city should reconsider excess regulatory costs imposed on developers, which of course are passed on to buyers. It does not seem necessary to me that every cul-de-sac be paved with a curb, gutter, and sidewalk. I grew up in a gravel street until I was about 10. I was not deprived because of this. Also, in my hometown, there are still prosperous neighborhoods with unpaved side streets. The city should encourage mixed-income neighborhoods and new developments, not just downtown. Those of modest homes will live side by side with the prosperous. Do not repeat the mistakes of cities that stratify residents by income. Another concern of mine is the growth of subsidized dwellings. There is a potentially unhealthy trap to be avoided. If housing subsidies suddenly go away when the dweller gets a better job or a raise, that is a trap to be avoided. Tenants force out because they improve themselves. Housing the disabled and elderly avoid that trap. The Governor's House program does not have that trap. Widespread building of apartments with income limits and forms to be filled out do fall into that trap. Also, I note that in my neighborhood, Pettigrew Heights, near 12th Street, multiple structures of subsidized housing are clustered. The newest is being built on the Irving School site. Enough there already. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Good evening.
Tim Stangert. I'm here for the Whittier Neighborhood again. I don't know how many times the Whittier Neighborhood has to come in front of this body to try to get something done in the neighborhood. What happened is the city council has caused the problem on what's being done in Whittier Neighborhood because we pushed everybody out of downtown into the Whittier Neighborhood. You guys can sit and say, "No, we didn't. No, we didn't." Yes, you did. Every vote that you took to take the riffraff out of downtown and putting it in the Whittier Neighborhood, you guys held the gun to every citizen in the Whittier Neighborhood. What do you do to the park in Whittier Neighborhood? That's not a hard one to figure out. What you got to do is put the LED lighting, so you light that park up so nobody wants to be in that park at all. You trim the trees back so they can't hide behind the trees. You're going to see the person that's in the, in the park. And then what you do is you have a police officer every hour go by that park every hour. It's not a hard one to figure out. We caused the problem. We had to clean up downtown. And I'll tell you what, it's time that the city starts working into these neighborhoods. Again, go over on Prairie. Does that house still have plywood on the windows? And have they been cited? I don't think they have, at least the last time I checked, and that was Friday. Why haven't they been cited yet? I wonder how many city councilors took my advice and drove through their neighborhood. I know Pat does. I would say every one of you guys probably never did. Because why? That neighborhood isn't paying you to run here and isn't paying for your yes vote. But you are hired by the citizens, and you deserve to drive through these neighborhoods, and you deserve to turn in these properties that are, that should not even be inhabitable. Anything that has a plywood on, plywood on windows should be cited by the city, and it should be taken. I deal with a house on Fourth and Cliff. It's a drug house. Matter of fact, they raided it yesterday again. I wonder if we could pull the, pull the police log on that house. And how many times have police have raided that house within the last year? But yet, has the city done anything? I know their hands are tied, but they got plywood in one window, and they got plywood in the front door. That's a code violation. Why isn't it being done? We have to start working on these neighborhoods to make them stronger, not weaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I want to thank you for your time, first and foremost. I want to call up Pat Starr.
State your name, please.
Oh, my name's Michaela Smothers. I want to thank Pat Starr. I came here last Tuesday, and I spoke on behalf of the neighborhood across the street from Heritage Park. Pat showed up that night. He saw firsthand the issues we've had. Pat even called the cops for us on the people who came back into the park after 10:00. We've had some really great conversations with Pat. The issue he has run into is there's a lack of funding to put in the brighter lights in Heritage Park. The Parks Department has talked about coming out and trimming up some of the trees. One of the biggest issues right now is the primary light that's in the center of the park is broken. It flickers on and off. At first, when we first moved in, we thought it was motion censored, and it's not. It's just literally faulty wiring, and the light will come on for five seconds and go out for 10 minutes and then come on for five seconds and go out for 10 minutes. I did bring my children with me tonight. They were super excited here that I am coming and speaking on their behalf and the behalf of my neighborhood. I need more from you guys. The city, you guys heard, if you watched the news, I was on there, as was Pat, we've had double the calls from 2019, and it's only July to Heritage Park. There have been double the police officers there every single day. There are police officers there, which is great. They maintain the populace during the day. But what happens at 10:00? We now have people who are squatting on the corner of 7th and Nesmith, which is where business is located. They have actually taken two twin mattresses, and they hang out there. The police can't do anything because it's private property, and there's no no trespassing signs. Pat has been working with the businesses on that corner to also get abandoned vehicles removed that the police have been working for two months to get them removed. I am asking you to step up because the Whittier Neighborhood and the Pettigrew Heights neighborhoods, they're overlooked. There are a lot of great homes there. There are a lot of great people there. And as I told you last week, I will be here every single Tuesday that you meet pleading for my neighborhood because I should be able to take my kids over there. I also had a gentleman show up on my doorstep yelling at us because we called the cops because of what they're doing. So I should not be accosted and harassed on my own property for doing my civic duty to provide a safe neighborhood for my children. So again, I thank you for your time, and I will see you next week.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Come forward, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Houghan. I chose to come here from another city in metropolitan area. I chose it after watching everything from coming here to drive all the streets. Because I come from a place where, well, I guess, you know, hell is a relative. I come from the Washington West Coast. And the way I see the city of Sioux Falls, you know, it's the rule of law, not the rule of emotion. You know, it's the rule of law. And I find you to be a premium city to live in. Now, I wasn't going to talk tonight. I was just coming to kind of check the place out. But I kind of hate to hear people put the city down. And I've only been a legal resident here since April 22nd. Well, maybe a little later. I have my driver's license and all that stuff changed over. But wow. If you don't think Sioux Falls is good, go to Seattle, where they set up six blocks called Chubb. Now, the rule of law says that the first responsibility of government is to protect the citizens. Well, that's setting up a situation, as they've done there, which I call a killing zone. Because once you pull law and order out, and every governor in the United States has the ability to call in the National Guard when that happens. And that should be done immediately, just like you did, along with Governor Kristi Noem, whom I didn't even know what she was about, but when you had the sort of a one-night thing. There's a right to legally protest. And the governor did not conflate legal protesters with rioters, looters, and arsonists. She made it very clear. And when you get a situation like that, overwhelmed, seems to me the history of law in the United States gives you the option. And what did you do? You did it in 10 minutes. You called the backup. They waited weeks and even months.
Thanks, Dennis.
And what do they got? A hellhole.
Yes, sir. Appreciate. Ma'am?
Okay.
Thank you, Dennis. Appreciate you being here. Welcome to Sioux Falls, sir. Ma'am, I'm going to give you one more chance. Next outbreak, you're going to be banned from these chambers, and we will, we will enforce that. This is my meeting. I run the rules. Ma'am, security, can you, John, can you escort her out, please? She's done. She's, she's done. Thank you. All right. We'll move forward. If there's any other public input. Seen none. All right, clerk, next item, please.
Item 11 is a second reading. It was deferred from the meeting of Tuesday, July 7, 2020. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located east of North Marion Road and north of Interstate 90 from the AG Agriculture and C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar Districts to the I2 Heavy Industrial District, number 12173 2020. And amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls, the Planning Commission recommends approval for the zero.
Good evening, Jason.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application by Paul Korn with Seer Associates. The owner is the Sioux Falls Development Foundation. It's located north of Interstate 90 and east of North Marion Road. It's roughly 24.57 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking at adding some additional property to the Foundation Park Industrial Development.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item tonight? All right, councilors, do you have any questions for Jason on this one? Move approval. Nitzer?
Second, Erickson.
All right. Motion by Nitzer, seconded by Erickson to approve this. Any discussion, council? All right. Hearing none. Let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right. That item passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Second reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, authorizing the issuance of its storm drainage system revenue bonds in one or more series to the South Dakota Conservancy District, authorizing the use of the proceeds thereof for capital improvements, pledging the storm drainage system revenue of the city, pardon me, revenue of the city to the payment of said storm drainage system revenue bonds, fixing the terms of such storm drainage system revenue bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement between the city and the South Dakota Conservancy District, and authorizing the execution and delivery of such storm drainage system revenue bonds to the South Dakota Conservancy District not to exceed $9,457,400.
Good evening, Andy.
Evening. Andy Berg, Public Works. Tonight's second reading is, I'm going to just step through the same presentation as last week. I'll go through it quickly, but with Councilman Jensen being here, I want to make sure I hit on everything. So tonight, the SRF loan is loan 42. There are three storm sewer projects we're planning to fund with these dollars. As shown in the map, they are all on the west, southwest side of town. I'll step through each of them briefly. Basin 104 is the final phase of improvements to the 49th and Louise Avenue area. This is extending the box culvert that was done with the intersection improvements out to the Oxbow near the Butterfly House and Outdoor Campus. This is the last phase of the project to bring needed drainage improvements to that area. Second, Basin 95, this is out near the 57th and Holbrook area, JFK Elementary area. There are multiple improvements throughout this basin, inlets, piping repairs, and then some also needed detention- some also needed detention areas, working through land acquisitions for those detention areas, but this one is currently in design. And then the last one, Basin 371, this is near 26th Street and Saratoga Avenue. Inlet repairs, pipe upsizing, channel improvements, and then added volume for the detention pond out in that area, what we call the Roosevelt Pond. So all three of these projects are in areas that are existing and have been identified as being, uh, needed improvements to meet the design standards. Uh, the SRF loan is for $9 million. We have an interest rate of 2% for a 10-year period. 1% of that will be brought back to us through, uh, non-point source dollars, so the effective loan rate on that loan is 1%. We applied for this loan in September of last year. We're currently in the process of approving the bond ordinance and the design is underway. Bid and construction will begin late this year into early next year. Non-point source dollars are used to fund water quality projects primarily upstream of the city. The non-point source being outside of the, the point sources that a city contributes to the river. Uh, the non-point source dollars, we have historically spent a lot of money on buffers along Skunk Creek, Big Sioux and their tributaries. Um, as the picture shows, we're taking grazing off of those areas, allowing those banks to heal and provide a buffer before water, uh, pollutants can run into those streams. The non-point source dollars equates to $457,000 for this loan. Previous success we've had with SRF loans, most recent project was the Terry Avenue and 43rd Project, put, uh, over a mile of 12-foot diameter pipe below the park to provide needed storage in that basin, provided over 5 million gallons of storage and some inlet and pipe improvements up within that basin as well. With that, I'll open up to any questions.
All right. Thank you, Andy. Anyone from the public here to speak on this topic tonight? Councilors, you got any questions for Andy? Counselor Knightzert?
Uh, what's the primary funding source for this? Is this the storm drainage line item and the property tax or something else that funds this?
The debt service repayment on the $9 million loan will be this drainage fees, yes, that's on the property tax as a special fee.
Okay. Um, and, and I do want to note just how, um, high impact this is. There's very few things that people are concerned about more than drainage and to be able to address entire neighborhoods. Can you tell me about the, the 40, the, two of the three were very obvious to me. I can visualize the, the issues over there, but help me with the, the 41st one. Does that have a, i- is there existing drainage problems in that particular area that we're addressing?
Uh, the Basin 371?
Yes.
Between 26th and 41st, yes. Uh, we've got a fair amount of crossing issues on the two yellow channels that you can see in the, the image there, coming from the south from 41st Street and also coming from Saratoga. The culverts aren't sized large enough to handle the flows. We get frequent overtopping the roads or flooding the roads and wash out of those culverts. And then, uh, we get significant flooding in that pond itself. And so there's some high ground on that pond where we're going to take that down and add some additional volume in there. So when we're getting those flows there more efficiently through those improved channels, we have the volume there to all still detain that water and pass, pass it safely downstream.
Okay. Does this impact at all either the, um, channels going up towards like Dorothy Avenue straight north or also going northeast towards Strabane Trail and wrapping up to 26th and?
Yeah, the, the, the channel going towards, along Strabane towards 26th Street is immediately downstream of this pond area. So adding that additional storage will help protect that from any additional flows that would come down there and give it a bit more detention time. Uh, we have improved channels going straight west towards Ellis Road. We've added some detention out by Ellis Road with that project we recently completed. So it's, uh, very much a basin-wide improvements. This is, uh, just one more piece of the puzzle in that area.
I, I don't know whether there's anything in there or not, but it's become quite a fishing hole over there on Ellis Road. Kids are fishing in there all the time.
I've heard that, yeah.
And, um, and, and I will say that I was able to tour, um, go to those pipes at Marion Park. I don't know if you were there that day, but I was able to stand inside of those 10-foot pipes before they filled them with water and it's amazing. And, and, and the park looks, you wouldn't even know. It, it's beautiful now. It's been reseeded and the playsets there, you wouldn't know that you have millions of gallons of storage underneath this park. So that's what the fees do, so.
Thank you, counselor. Other questions for Andy on this, council? All right, look for a motion on it.
Move to approve. Jensen moves approve.
Erickson, second.
All right. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Erickson on that. Any other discussion, council? All right. Seeing none, we'll take a vote on this, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that item passes eight to zero. We'll move on to item 13, please.
An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, authorizing the mayor to enter into a ground lease agreement between the United States Postal Service.
Good evening, Matt.
Good evening, uh, Matt Nelson, Public Parking Facilities Manager. Um, no presentation, we did that last week, but I will summarize, uh, what we're here for. This is to enter into a 10-year lease with the United States Postal Service for a, uh, parking lease on a lot located at 211 South Third Avenue, which is adjacent and adjoining to their current parking lot. Um, it is a term of 10 years with a 10-year option. That 10-year option would require council approval, so this really is just a 10-year lease. Uh, and because of the duration of this lease is why it's being brought forward to the council. Uh, it's required by ordinance. Um, the current rates that they'll go into the lease at are market rates. They will have 10% increases every five years. Um, and the value of this lease over five years is, uh, or over 10 years is approximately 250,000. And if the lease option for the second 10 years was exercised, it'd be approximately another $300,000. Um, but pending any questions, uh, that's all I have for you.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this one tonight? Counselors, you got any questions for Mr. Nelson on this one? Counselor Starr?
Mr. Mayor? Uh, Mr., uh, Matt, is it a full 10 years or is it five years plus a renewal for five?
Okay, so there, it's a 20-year lease. So there's a five-year option, uh, with an increase at, at year six through 10. Uh, and then the second 10 years is an additional option where the-
Index for any given year, whichever is greater. This past year ending in May, it was point one percent. The rate increase was originally established in the original ambulance request for proposals to make provisions for the provider to be able to plan for their capital improvements and other business needs that increase, costs increase over time, whether that be technology, employee wages, and whatnot. The REMS A Board has reported that Patient Care EMS has fulfilled their contract requirements, and they support your approval of a three percent service rate increase of three percent. And for Councilor Jensen's benefit, we did do a detailed presentation last week. The REMS A Board does produce a detailed performance report for the ambulance service every year where they met response time performance, clinical performance, system improvements, workforce stability, pricing compliance, and reporting compliance. We'll be happy to make that report available to you. So along with myself, Mike Bureau, COO of Patient Care EMS, is here this evening.
All right. Thanks, Alicia. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item tonight? Please come forward.
Hello again. I'm David Zokitis, and I wanted to do some work on this particular topic. In particular, I was curious about that three percent number. Where did it come from? You know, our city contract says the supplier gets three percent or the Consumer Price Index, whichever is higher. Well, I was wondering why. And I talked to Alicia via email, and she said that the city picked that magic three percent number in their RFP. All right. And some, it's a compromise between the two different CPI indicators. Well, let's look at the bigger picture. Inflation is basically running about zero, zero point one percent, but the market growth of ambulances seems to be about one and a half percent. The contract rate is three percent, and medical CPI is six percent. So there's quite a range of numbers there, somewhere between zero and six percent. For market growth, I did a little internet search, and I found this particular reference. Apparently, the market grows about one point five percent every year. Now, if I had nine hundred and twenty-five dollars for that report, I'd get a little more detailed information, but let's just say I skipped that. So how do you, how do you figure out what to do with all these different numbers? Well, for users, three percent raise is certainly better than a six percent. For the company, three percent is certainly better than zero percent. So, you know, maybe three percent's a reasonable choice, but the market growth of one and a half percent might be a better indicator of the costs which rise for the contractor for that year. So, but if you had nine hundred and twenty-five dollars to get a better indicator of how the prices change for the industry as a whole, well, then go get yourself a report. And that's all I have. Just checking into three percent, it seems like a reasonable figure, but maybe market growth would be a better choice. And that's all.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? All right, councilors, you have any questions for Alicia on this item?
Move to approve.
Second, Selberg. All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Selberg, Counselor Starr.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Assistant Director, I watched something happen in downtown yesterday, and I, I think we're moving in the right direction that's going to solve this, but I watched a gentleman who was passed out drunk on the courtyard by Dakota News Now Studio. There was a PD officer already there, and then fire rescue came and helped the gentleman and tried to figure out if he was truly unconscious or drunk or what was going on, and I could see it from a distance, and they sat him up. But what I watched happen is that then the, the ambulance service came, again, just as fast with lights and sirens. Is there a way we can get to the point where, once one of them is on scene, whether it's the ambulance service or fire rescue, that the second one doesn't have to come or downgrades the call? Because again, what I've learned in this process is that the wave effect that happens and when ambulances are moving faster is potential to cause another accident, and watching two different systems race to the scene that put other people in jeopardy. And the other part of the question is that I'm so glad that we're moving forward with doing that because I'm assuming that the person was headed towards the, the emergency room rather than detox and getting the medical care that they could get at a triage-type center.
Yes, so I think your question was about multiple respondents to one scene, and that is a matter of system design for the city of Sioux Falls. It is planned that Sioux Falls PD would arrive first, apply, you know, life-saving measures if needed, Sioux Fire's, Sioux Falls Fire Rescue second, and, and then also would be followed by our ambulance service. So it is a matter, you know, people will see multiple folks show up to a scene, but it is a matter of our system design, and we're very fortunate that we have the system in place where all of our partners work so well together. So I can't speak to that specific call particularly, but I know when you say, when you said, mentioned lights and sirens, you're right, you, you do want to be judicious with lights and sirens around town, and it reminded me that in the quality report for Patient Care EMS, when, when measured against other, like, agencies, they actually compared really well. It looked like non-lights and siren transport from scene was ninety-four percent for Sioux Falls Patient Care EMS, which, with eighty-seven of the, of the peer, peers in the network. So it seems like they're doing a good job trying to be judicious with lights and sirens.
No, totally agree. I just, I see the expense of it to have the additional providers and to have multiple, just the, the action of it happening, and I was impressed by how the system worked and to, to be able to have those responders on scene that quickly. I mean, because there was only a few minutes difference between fire rescue and the, the ambulance provider, so I think we're getting there. It's just making the system better.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. We have a motion second on the floor. Is there any discussion amongst the council on this item? All right. Any other questions for Alicia? Seeing none, we'll take a vote on it then.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item fifteen.
Second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and the Sioux Empire Triage Center.
Alicia.
Once again, Alicia Colora, Health Department. Tonight is the second reading of the lease agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and the Sioux Empire Triage Center nonprofit for the annex building at 132 North Dakota Avenue, or the future new home of Link, where an array of mental health and chemical dependency services will be available to any resident within our community. The lease includes the building in total and has an estimated annual valuation of a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. This amount will be applied as an in-kind contribution, it will be in-kind credit towards the city's contribution to the project. The term of the lease is from the time it is executed through the end of 2023, and it has been signed by the Sioux Empire Triage Center nonprofit and is ready for your final approval.
All right. Thanks, Alicia. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item tonight? Counsel, you have questions for Alicia on this? Counselor Erickson.
No questions, just a statement. This is a long time coming. This really started, you know, I've, I've said it time and time again, but with Erin Surtsky, I don't know how many of you know her, had this vision and applied for a grant. And this grant went about five hundred thousand dollars, I believe, is what we got, and then we got a little bit more, and she so graciously invited the city to come along because, let's be honest, the city can't do this by themselves, the county can't do this by themselves, the same people reside in the city that reside in the county. And so the impact this will have regionally is truly quite amazing. We all say we want to do something for mental health. We all, we want to move the needle. This will do that. The location is, is awesome. It's a great opportunity for the city to be able to give an in-kind for the facility that we have and reutilize that with innovation and technology being moved over to the other place. So it's been an honor to be a part of this. I, I know Erin asked me to be a part of it, oh gosh, I want to say four years ago, and walking through this four years now, it, I didn't know that it would ever happen. I mean, you know, when, when we say government moves too fast, and we like to ramrod things through, wow, we've taken four years to make sure we do this right. There's been a pilot project, there's been stages, and if you would have told me four years ago that both hospital systems would have been on board and equally supported this concept and impact within the city, I don't know that I would have believed you because we all thought that was a pretty tall order, and the fact that both hospital systems are one hundred percent invested in making this impact, as well as this administration with the county and us as a city council, it's truly a great day. I mean, it's, it's a really big deal for us to be able to make this. And National League of Cities, I know Counselor Brecky, and I don't remember who else was there with us, but we were recognized, the city of Sioux Falls and Rapid City, South Dakota, were recognized nationally at this National League of Cities for innovation and moving forward with the triage concept, and, you know, we gave a, a little woo, and I don't know if anybody heard us, but we certainly were proud to say, yeah, South Dakota doesn't always have to be last at everything. We can pave the way, and so this is what we're doing tonight, and I'm super excited that we continue to be a part of the process. So thanks for your leadership on this, and truly, if everybody was not on board, this wouldn't happen without the administration as well. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Alicia? Someone want to make a motion to approve this?
Move to approve, Brecky. Second, Erickson.
All right. Motion by Counselor Brecky, seconded by Erickson to approve this item. Discussion, councilors? All right, we'll take a vote on it, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that item passes eight to zero. Item sixteen, please.
First reading, ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending Chapter thirty-six finances, section thirty-six point zero-two-nine, publication of advertisement for bids.
Good evening, councilors. Scott Rust, Finance Office. Earlier this year, the South Dakota Legislature passed a bill to increase the public improvement bid limit from fifty thousand dollars to a hundred thousand dollars. Chapters twenty-nine of the Sioux Falls City Ordinance, basically mere state law for procurement of goods, services, and, and construction. So essentially, this is just really cleanup language and bring our ordinances up to date with South Dakota state law.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Anyone from the public here to speak on this topic? Councilors, do you have any questions for Scott on this item?
Move of approval.
Second, Brecky.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Erickson to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, July twenty-one. Any discussion, councilors?
I'll just.
Counselor Erickson.
I just want to share that this is yet another example of our joint collaboration with the city-county. This was on our legislative priorities, and through our work together agreeing with the county and the city, we were able to make some change, while it seems like a kind of a simple, silly change. It really is a big deal, and will make things more streamlined. So, again, just the labor of our, the, coming out of our legislative meetings that we've had and being on there, so.
My staff is thanking you.
Well, thank you guys for, for bringing it forward and, and allowing the legislature to, to make some positive changes, and this is what it is to collaborate and work together.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Seeing no other discussion on this, let's take a vote on it, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. We'll move on to item seventeen.
A resolution advising and giving consent to a liaison and alternate to the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance.
Good evening, Bill.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Pursuant to the IGC or the International, the government contract with the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, there's a provision in that agreement that requires us to designate, in essence, administrative folks to coordinate with risk services, loss control services, those kinds of things. The resolution designating those folks is somewhat dated. There's been changes in organizational structures and responsibilities, and we're simply asking that the resolution be updated, and what I'm asking you to do is appoint myself, the Director of Human Resources, a risk manager, and a safety and risk coordinator as the individuals responsible for the coordination of those services. And just for some background information, risk management was just recently transferred to the Human Resources Department earlier this year. So I would urge your support and be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Bill. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item here? Councilors, you have questions for Bill on this item?
Move to approve, Erickson.
All right. Motion by Erickson, seconded by Selberg, Counselor Starr.
Yes, thank you, Director O'Toole. This is a, kind of one of those things that's a little monotonous to get through to, to do it, and I appreciate your department stepping up to kind of clean up some of this. My real concern in this, in the resolution, is that you're asking us to give advice and consent to a mayoral appointment, but you're asking us to give it to a job title rather than an individual person. And I think one of the three places, or the three people, or the three job titles that you're asking us to give advice and consent to is not, is open at this time, that there isn't an employee at that point. But just tell me a little bit about why that you thought it was, rather than doing advice and consent for a person, because I'd gladly vote for you and give you the advice and consent to do this. But where I'm concerned is that the mayor's giving up that appointment by not, by doing it by job title rather than by individual.
Well, first, let me say, that was at my recommendation that we do it that way, and frankly, it was just done for efficiency purposes. When you list an individual, for example, and time goes by, there can be changes. So I thought it would be more efficient to identify title as opposed to a person simply to account for that. So that was at, at my urging and nobody else's.
I appreciate that, and I guess I'm going to save the discussion for the policy debate here until we have a motion, so that answers my question at least.
And we do have a motion on the floor. Counselor Brecky.
Question for the city attorney. I share that same concern. I don't know, it, I, I, this is the first time I ever recall as a council, you know, giving advice and consent to a position, because it, it's always been to an individual, because what are we really giving advice and consent? We're giving it to something in the future. We don't know, you know, we're supposed to be diligent and, and studious, and, you know, we've asked for biographies before, you know, you know, biographies when we, you know, biographical information when we do it for board members. We don't have that here. I mean, I get the expediency thing, but I think there's a technical legal concern that I have with that, and I've got an additional one with the resolution, but I just wanted to ask you, it just, it concerns me that we're giving advice and consent to positions. I have no problem giving it to the individual. I realize it might have been an expediency thing, but I don't know that that's our prerogative. I, I think we should be approving names.
No, I understand the question and the concern. I, I guess the way I would characterize it is that it's, it's kind of a pick-your-poison. You know, if you identify an individual, you know, they can resign, retire, you can go down the list. I think when it comes down to, it's probably more of a policy decision than a legal decision, whether you want to identify a certain position or an individual. So I think it's probably more of just a, a comfort level that the council would have.
One further question. Why are we even doing it? It is also, I'm wondering if it isn't administrative. If we're just designating a position pursuant to an intergovernmental agreement, it's really just a job, a task assignment, you know, that the mayor, you know, is, you know, can pick. I don't, I'm not sure why, you know, it's not a board, it's not a committee, you know, why the council is actually doing this. It seems like it's an administrative task that's fully within the purview of just the mayor's office.
And, and it's one that has been handled that way historically. As I'm sure you know, the, the, the city has been a part of the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance since nineteen eighty-six, and that's the way it's been handled before with the transition, and when you look at it state law, again, you come back to the fact that either way is legal, so you're allowed to do it this way, and this is something that Bill has, has reviewed, and, and we discussed that as well. And again, you're, you're allowed to do it either way by statute. This is, is an appropriate way to do it. So as far as the, the balance of power component, this is one that was brought forward by the administration and is eligible for this type of treatment, so.
Counselor Erickson.
Just to kind of reiterate some of the points that Counselor Brecky made, is that this clearly is, is not a committee, and that this is really just the administration stating who those liaisons are, so you're not putting them on the committee, it's just an alternate, and truly, those liaisons. So I don't personally have an issue with it, and I appreciate you bringing it forward to us because I would rather have a say than not have a say. And oftentimes, we criticize the administration for saying, why did you move forward and not bring that to the council? How dare you? And now you're bringing it forward to you, to us, and we're saying, Bill, why are you bringing this forward to us? Why not just do it? Well, I'm appreciative of you bringing it forward. I'd rather have a say than not have a say. So thank you for that, and I'll be supporting it.
Thank you, and I, and I would just mention as well, I guess, I, I wouldn't have any objections if council would feel comfortable putting names associated with that in, in absence of a risk manager. I would have names that you could certainly interject if, if that would provide comfort. I have no objection to that.
Counselor Sale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the subject of, as Counselor Starr brought up, having a, not a name associated with a job description, I under, I understand your concern about what we're supposed to give you consent, but a lot of times in my history, I've seen where your job description entitles you to serve on a certain board. If you're the director, if you've been HR director, you're on the pension board. That's just part of the job description that goes with there, and since they have a vacancy right there, I'm sure that we're going to get that name fairly soon and to, to work on that. But I think those are the appropriate positions to be on the risk pool, which is, by the way, it's a pretty gull darn good insurance that we have through them. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Knightzert.
Well, to tag off of what Counselor Sale was talking about, really what we're saying is, we're designated, designating ex officio membership, that by virtue of your position, which is very typical in many boards, and to say that by virtue of your position, you will serve on a certain board or whatever, so I, I don't think that's completely atypical, so.
And, and again, this is simply within the IGC itself that says, we shall appoint these individuals. I mean, it's one of the requirements of the agreement itself.
Sure, but I, I think, again, by the nature of, of certain job positions, those are the individuals, whoever they may be, that should be serving on such a thing, so I would be comfortable.
Any other discussion, council, on this item? All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor, seeing no other discussion. We'll take a vote on it, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
No.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that item passes seven to one, and we'll move to item thirteen, which was pulled from contracts.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, if Director O'Toole wouldn't mind just explaining what the item is, again, it follows with the, the risk pool agreement or with the South Dakota Assurance Alliance.
Sure, I'll, Denise, you want to read that into the record?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. It's Human Resources, and it's an agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance to form local government risk pool by providing risk, risk management services and defending and protecting against liability, South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, and that's for eight hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Thank you. Bill.
Again, just, just real quickly, I mean, that describes the nature of what it is. We are one of the charter members to this risk pool that was, that was founded in nineteen eighty-seven. It has now grown to over four hundred members of municipalities across the state of South Dakota, and they provide us with risk management services, liability-related services. You can think of your general liability, your auto liability, those kinds of things are what the city obtains, insurances through the, being a member of this risk pool. So in a nutshell, in a short explanation, that's it.
All right. Thanks, Bill. Counselor Starr.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my concern, Director, is the email that you sent me this morning. Sorry, I just make sure I get the right one. You basically say that the IGC is between the city and the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance is a, is perpetually renewed. And where my concern comes in is in ordinance, chapter thirty-six point zero-two-two, it expressly disallows multiple-year contracts and agreements, and it says that we are allowed to do a multiple year contract that's a five-year period with an option for renewal or renegotiation up to a fi, another five-year period. So I'm trying to put the two together, how we're, have a perpetual agreement in place or a contract, and then ordinance says that we're not allowed to do that.
I might defer to the city attorney for an explanation.
Yeah, good question. The reality of it is, there's, there's perpetual language like he referenced in his email this morning, but the reality is that it can be, the city can withdraw from this contract at any time, so it's not a true multi-year contract. You have actually the option upon sixty days' notice to withdraw from it at any given time or not make your payment on an annual basis. Like Bill mentioned, the city's a charter member of this, they've been doing it since nineteen eighty-seven, and so they've renewed it on an annual basis. This is a transition, even talking about the representative piece, and the city has, has chosen to remain a member ever since. And of course, that, by virtue of that membership is in effect the insurance coverage that they receive. So it's not, for example, like a fifty-year lease where you, you're bound to that and cannot withdraw until X period of time. It's actually annually renewed, and of course, through the budget process, also revisited every year.
So if I could, Mr. Mayor, just to, to follow up on that, annually, there are usually, according to your email, some minor changes that we agree to, to the contract. How is that not a new contract then each year? Or that the liaison that we approved in the prior resolution, signing off and taking basically power away from the mayor, who's the only one that's, by ordinance, allowed to make contractual agreements and sign them, and be able to delegate that to an employee that, or a liaison that we just appointed?
And, and we discussed that before regarding annual changes, and that I'm not familiar with. What I do know is that I think four or five times over the span of this relationship that we've had with the, with the pool, there have been amendments. And it, to understand the structure of the pool writ large, it's, there are four hundred and thirty-one members, municipalities and counties throughout the, the state, and so when they make those decisions at the board level on the public assurance side, which is a governmental entity, as recognized by the Department of Revenue, what's really happening is if, if this became a circumstance where it, it could not be delegated or handled in this fashion, then they would spend, they would do nothing but all year be working on amendments and adjustments at, at each level. This, I realize, is a long answer to a relatively short question, but practically speaking, historically, the times that they've made those amendments, which again, I'm not aware of those on an annual basis, and maybe it's just substantively, but, you know, the four or five times that they've done it, it's been signed by that representative on behalf of the city, so.
That's correct. Just to shed a little light, Counselor, the last three times there were amendments that required signatures, twelve, twenty-seven, seventeen, March third of fifteen, and six, six of twelve, so that gives you some indication, the frequency with which amendments do come forward. And again, pursuant to the, the IGC, the Board of Directors is authorized to make amendments through two-thirds majority vote, and then it becomes a responsibility of the member to, in essence, accept those ratifications, obtain the signatures. And I think historically, what you've seen is that designated person was making that signature to that agreement. And the reason I'm coming forward to you now with this is because we were presented with a current amendment, and I shared the position that I thought the, the, the manner in which we were doing this, it would, it would make more sense to me to utilize this process, and I recognize it's, it's a change in process, but it's just a, I would call it a housekeeping procedural change, but a change nonetheless. And, and when I found that the last resolution appointing the alternate designee was from nineteen ninety-nine for a person who longer is employed by the city of Sioux Falls and another person who is still employed by the city but not in that role, that led and got the ball rolling to the changes that are before you.
Totally apprised. So from the contract that you sent me earlier today from December twenty-seventh of twenty-seventeen, there haven't been any amendment else, not that I'm aware of.
Super. Thank you.
And if, if I can just add to that, just to, just for the public's awareness in the council, it's, it's really a take-it-or-leave-it type of the pool and the agreements that the municipalities and county, counties entered into, when they make these amendments, they're in effect, in some respects, a ratification, so a purse regarding being a member and staying involved, but these amendments are really ones that, with the representatives of the members who make these adjustments or these changes, remain in the pool or not. these adjustments or these changes, remain in the pool or not.
And just maybe clarify one other point. Right within the agreement under membership, it says the agreement shall be automatically renewed unless the provisions for withdrawal.
All right. Does anyone want to make a motion on this item?
Move to Greg Erickson.
Second.
Kylie.
All right, Counselor Brecky.
Just a couple more questions for the city attorney. It sounds like to me, what are we, are we authorizing the mayor to accept these amendments? What exactly is the purpose of this resolution?
Just authorizing the mayor to enter into these amendments. It's one that, in effect, the city of Sioux Falls is ratifying or acknowledging those amendments, but we have agreed to be a member when they paid the, well, the amount set forth there at the beginning of the year. So there really isn't anything about this from a construct.
Does the mayor sign it with license consent of the council? Does it?
That's what occurred in nineteen eighty-six, nineteen eighty-seven, is when the mayor, when this, what separates this from a lot of the other contracts that we do, is between governmental entities. And so when the city of Sioux Falls joined the pool as a charter member, the language, but also the ability for each member to withdraw on an annual basis or upon sixty days' notice. So really, even what you're designating here tonight is not an accept the premium. It's, in effect, acknowledging the amendments that were adopted by the pool itself.
So if the city ever did know we're quite happy with the pool and have been for years, but, so that would come to us from the mayor's office in a kind of a negative form. He would need our approval to withdraw.
Because it would have to, it would have to be at least in conjunction, if not brought earlier, a private contract, because you'd be going outside the intergovernmental agreement that provide the liability coverages that the pool covers for us. So it would be, I would suggest, a twofold issue would be a withdrawal or all those coverages that the pool does provide.
Council be involved in that withdrawal?
Yeah, yeah, well, when you look at bid limits and the, yeah, I mean, which the council would be completely distinct from the forty-plus years, thirty-plus years that we've been in this, in this contract, so.
I appreciate, understand how this all works.
Yep.
Counselor Erickson?
Just think of CCOG as a similar example. We don't approve every single change. They make changes often, and we're not one to approve every single change. So it's very similar to the example of what we're hearing today in a lot of, doing it where it's being brought in front of the council, and we just haven't seen it in the past. And so I appreciate just.
That's correct. And if I may, to make it very simple, and after that, the alternate or designee sign the amendments as they occurred. And what I'm suggesting now with this change is that as those amendments are brought in, those documents moving forward, they would come before you through this process.
And that, thank you for adding that, because that's what my recollection is. My recollection is that the mayor signed it. In my brain, it was thinking, okay, this is a contract, and then we would naturally be approving amendments, just like we approved the amendment to the amendments agreement. So I was having some trouble.
And over time, designee was the mayor, and those designees changed over time.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there a star?
Actually, to follow up with what Counselor Brecky was asking, I think what we're approving tonight is a contract with the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, and the contract is doing that, and that will be signed by the mayor by us approving this, to boil it down to the simplest parts. My concern where it is trying to do is that this agreement that we're going to have the mayor sign on our behalf, or we're giving him permission tonight to sign that agreement, then will be by an appointed individual who isn't the mayor and isn't the council. And by making amendments to this contract, no matter how minute they are, it still becomes a new contract. And we're not making that decision based on whether we want to agree to that or not. And I know that the things that the liaison will be, are inconsequential in the big picture of things, but my limited knowledge of the law means that it becomes a new contract. And that's what we're, changes by amending a contract, that's kind of, maybe I'm misunderstanding.
Maybe we're not connecting. Actually, what we're suggesting here is that in the future, that as those amendments vested with the alternate or the designee, that the mayor will sign the amended agreements.
Gotcha. So we're fixing the problem that we've been doing.
Changing the process to how it was done.
Thank you. That gets me on the right page. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other further discussion on this item, counsel? Hearing or seeing none, let's call for a vote on it, please, Denise.
Counselor Member Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Knightert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item eighteen.
A resolution advising giving consent to deployment members of certain citizen boards, and if I may, Mr. Mayor, read the names. Mary Murphy and Karen Veat to the Board of Health, Pamela Cole, Ann Ihog, Gail Fossumshay to the Board of Historic Preservation, Amy Polka to the City Naming Commission, and Dr. Gall, Jim Stanger to the Parks and Recreation Board, Sarah Lum, James Zajic, and to the Visual Arts Commission, Mike Gray, David Lott, Billy Palima to the Zoning Board of Adjustment.
All right. Thank you, Denise. Any of those folks here tonight, by chance? All right, anyone wish to speak on this item?
Move to Greg Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion approved by Erickson, seconded by Counselor Kylie. Any discussion, counsel, on this? All right, we'll take a vote on it, please.
Counselor Member Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that item passes eight to zero. This time, I'm going to pass the gavel over to Council Chair Selberg for probably the last time, and you guys are going to have your council election. So you have the first, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would you like to read the item to get us going?
Item nineteen is the election of the city council chair.
All right. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this subject this evening? Okay, maybe just a quick reminder for all those who are watching, every year, this body elects a chair and a vice chair. Tonight, we'll now go through that process. I can tell you from personal experience, having had the privilege of serving in leadership for the last two years, serving on this body is an honor, and this process is an important one. So that being said, we'll open the process up, and I would ask for any nominations for city council chair.
Mr. Chair.
Counselor Kylie.
I would like to nominate Counselor Greg Knightert for the position of chair.
Second.
Okay, Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor Sale, nominating Counselor Knightert for chair. Do we have any other nominations? Okay, Counselor Kylie, would you like to comment?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I believe there is little debate when I say that Counselor Greg Knightert has been and continues to be one of the hardest-working members of this body. When this council has tackled the tough issues, Counselor Knightert has done his homework. He does his research, weighs the pros and cons, asks the tough questions, but most of all, he listens to his constituents before arriving at a conclusion, a conclusion that he often articulates from this dais. James Cardinal Givens once said, "There are no office hours for leaders." There are no office hours for leaders. This quote is a good summation of Counselor Knightert's commitment to the citizens of Sioux Falls. Even though he is a full-time software engineer, a dad and husband, he has always worked tirelessly for the people, day and night, weekday, weekend, and on holidays. And he does it without a need for public accolades and praise. Counselor Knightert epitomizes a servant leader. Counselor Knightert and I have not always agreed on every issue that has come before this body. However, I have always found him willing to listen to voices contrary to his own. And at the end of the day, he's able to disagree without being disagreeable. That, frankly, is what makes government at any level work. And I believe that other government leaders should be following his example. Mr. Chair, it was three years ago that Counselor Knightert nominated me to chair this body. Tonight, it is my honor and privilege to nominate my colleague and friend, Greg Knightert, as chair of the Sioux Falls City Council.
Thank you, Counselor Kylie. Counselor Sale, did you have any comments?
No.
Okay. Would anybody else like to comment on the nominee? All right, if not, we will close up all nominations at this time. Ask the nominee if he has any comments at this time.
Sure. Well, first of all, thank you for the nomination. Maybe my number one goal is not to be as long-winded. Last year, I watched my vice chair discussion, and it was a little long-winded, which is, I'm sure, shocking. I do want to thank Counselor Selberg for his extended service as chair and for leading by example. He must be in month twenty or something by now of the one year since he's chair of the city council. He's led with a very steady hand and been a great example. It's been an honor to serve as vice chair, as I've told people many times. Working and supporting our staff has been a pleasure. Our staff is the reason why we are so successful, and they don't get enough credit, and they shout them as part-time counselors, we couldn't do what we do. What I've said before, and I'll say it again, is council leadership is not just about looking out for the better of the council, it's also about servant leadership. Counselors need timely and relevant information to make informed policy and budgetary decisions. It's the job of the council leadership to relay information to council and hold the administration accountable for that. Council leadership needs to maintain and foster an effective, respectful, two-way communication relationship with the admission, with accountability on both sides. This is rooted in trust, an agreement that we will disagree at times, but we need to demand of each other that it be respectful and based on policy, hacking motives, demonization, and character assassination. It's utterly unproductive, and it's destructive, and it won't be tolerated or part of my leadership if I am so elected. As it relates to servant leadership, council leadership serves council staff, fellow counselors, and citizens. Counselors need all of that information, and I will advocate for all to receive timely information from the administration. It's also up to each counselor to do their homework and build relationships with city staff, but if there are roadblocks, that's where leadership needs to step. There's a lot of day-to-day tasks and mundane things that a chair and vice chair perform, and it's not glamorous, but it needs to be done so that the rest of the council doesn't have to be bothered with it. And for simple things, you don't need eight people to decide whether to change a light bulb or not. And then as far as serving citizens, it really comes down to making sure that meetings are productive and informative and transparent, and that we ensure the ordinances and policies are followed. It'd be my honor to serve as council chair, and I would, of course, appreciate your support. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Knightert. Are there any further comments by any council members? Counselor Brecky?
This is the second year that we have followed this process for elections, and I have to say that I am really glowing with pride tonight. That was an excellent nomination speech, and that was an excellent acceptance speech. And I think that is how this council should elect its officers, by portraying their qualifications, their desire, their earnestness, and have a full process that does that. And I think you biffed at Kurt Sale. You were supposed to give a really nice seconding speech as well in support of your candidate, and you missed that opportunity. So there's room for improvement, but I really am appreciative of how the process is being handled.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments? All right, if not, we will take a vote.
Counselor Member Sale?
I proudly cast my vote for Greg Knightert.
Starr?
Yes.
I need the name of the person, please.
Oh, Greg Knightert.
Brecky?
Greg Knightert.
Erickson?
Greg Knightert.
Jensen?
Knightert.
Kylie?
Counselor Knightert for chair.
Knightert?
Knightert.
And Selberg?
Counselor Greg Knightert. Yeah, that is eight to zero. Congratulations. Next item, please.
Item twenty is election of city council vice chair.
Do we have anybody from the public who'd wish to speak on this item this evening? Welcome.
Hello, again. My name is Kales Smothers. I live over in the Whittier neighborhood, as I had disclosed to you earlier. I would like to recommend Pat Starr. You had mentioned being accountable for your citizens, and I greatly appreciate that, because that's what your guys' job is. We put you in power so that you can make changes often for us, because one voice is great, but we can only do so much as citizens in getting the consensus. And the outreach that you've given to our community has been excellent, and you have been willing to listen. You've told me I can call you at midnight if I want. And the fact that he's so accessible to the people, it makes me very happy. You would make my grandmother very happy. She was very involved in politics. But I think that he would make a great second-in-command, if you will, to you, just because he's willing to listen. He takes action. Within twenty-four hours of me being here, there was already a small snowball change happening. So I would like to recommend him for your consideration, just because of what you have done for me and my family and my neighborhood. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Anybody else? Welcome.
Tim Stanga, I recommend Pat Starr for a lot of the main reasons, but Pat, you've been there for my neighborhood for the past four years. I'm hoping to be able to work with you for another four years on trying to get Whittier neighborhood cleaned up. You are a leader for the citizens that you have been elected by and for, and you're not afraid to speak for the citizens of Sioux Falls and the people that you represent. And I think that you would make a great vice chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, counselors, I would open it up to nominations for vice chair. Counselor Erickson?
Thank you, former chair, Selberg. Just kidding. I would like to nominate Counselor Kurt Sale. Kurt Sale has been on the council for a couple of years now, and he has jumped in with two feet. I've had the honor to get to know him during his campaign through a runoff, which is extremely challenging, and meet with him during that time. His heart for the people is really pure. He is a former firefighter and offers really a unique perspective to us as a council as we wade through many different issues. He's now in the insurance industry, which still has a heart for the people. His quiet demeanor oftentimes, please don't be confused with his bold leadership. I've been in many meetings with Counselor Sale where he has held people accountable and asked the tough questions without doing it in an embarrassing way or without having to really beat the drum, if you will. I appreciate his leadership. If any of you know anything about how our leadership works, the vice chair does oversee our staff. We have several staff members, and that doesn't come lightly. With his knowledge and background from being a former firefighter, as well as his current industry that he's in right now, I'm honored to nominate him, knowing that he will be there for our staff, be that liaison with the council, as also continuing to do the work as a city counselor. As you all know, you get a whole lot of responsibility without a whole lot else that comes along with it. And so for those many reasons, I am honored to nominate Counselor Kurt Sale for vice chair and feel that he is the best fit for us.
Thank you, Counselor. So we have a motion for Counselor Sale for vice chair. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chair.
Counselor Kylie?
I would like to second that motion and nominate Kurt Sale for the position of vice chair.
Okay, so we have a motion for, and a second by Kylie. Did you have a comment?
Sure, because apparently we were supposed to. Actually, I was prepared to do so regardless. I've known Kurt Sale now for two years. I knew very little about Kurt Sale when he first came to this council. I knew very little about Kurt Sale when he first came to this council. But I feel like after two years, I know him as well as anybody else on the council or within city government for that reason, for that purpose. He, I know his past. I know what he's presently doing in, for employment and work, and, you know, I know what his positions generally, and we haven't always agreed on everything on this council. But like Counselor Nightser, we can disagree without being disagreeable, and that's Kurt Sale. He is, you never have to guess where he's at. He's very forthright in his position on things, but again, he does it in a respectful, professional manner, and that I very much appreciate, that type of quality. So again, I'm happy to nominate Kurt Sale for the position of vice chair.
Thank you, counselor. Do we have any other nominations for vice chair tonight? Counselors? Okay. If not, we will close all nominations at this time, and then I will ask the nominee if he would like to say a few words. Counselor Sale?
Thank you, Council Chair Selberg. I have a 40-page speech all prepared, but I decided to forego that tonight. I will strive not to disappoint anybody if I am fortunate to get the vice chair's spot. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Any further comments? Counselor Nightser?
Yeah, I just want to say just how impressed I've been over the last two years serving with Counselor Sale. I didn't know Counselor Sale before he came onto the council, and when people asked me about him, I say, "You know what? He's fabulous because he's steady, he's direct, he's no-nonsense, no drama, he's just get to the point. Let's, you know, wait, let's tell, let's get to the information." And he probably would be very good at keeping me in check and telling me when to shut up. So he has been fabulous, and I have no doubt that with his background and his demeanor, he would be a strong support for staff, which is maybe one of the most important parts of being a vice chair. So I think that would be great. Thanks.
Thank you, counselor. Any further comments? If not, I would ask for a vote.
Councilmember Sale?
Kurt Sale.
Starr?
Counselor Sale.
Breckie?
Kurt Sale.
Erickson?
Counselor Kurt Sale.
Jensen?
Counselor Kurt Sale.
Kylie?
Counselor Kurt Sale.
Nightser?
Counselor Kurt Sale.
Selberg?
Counselor Kurt Sale. That passes eight to zero. Congratulations.
Item 21 is election of fourth member to city council operations committee.
Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this subject this evening? All right. If not, I would open it up for any nominations for the fourth member to the city council operations committee.
Counselor Selberg.
Counselor Erickson?
Thank you. I would like to nominate Counselor Alex Jensen. Counselor Alex Jensen comes with a legislative mind. I appreciate his ability to wade through just really the policy and also just how things were done and the procedure in peer. Now, we are not peer, and we don't strive to be peer or Washington, D.C., for that matter, but having that knowledge, I think, will be super beneficial on the operations committee as we come forward of how can we operate in a more transparent way? How can we operate with bringing the public alongside? What can we do with maybe some things that we've done in the past that don't really make sense? And so I'm really excited to nominate Alex Jensen, Counselor Alex Jensen, for this role in just bringing some fresh eyes and maybe some newness to this committee for potential change. I will remind everyone that this is a committee that does not make any change without approval from this council. So while in the past, maybe others have thought this committee is a super-powerful committee that makes all these changes, any changes that are recommended do come in front of this council, and so, and those meetings are also open to the public. And so for those reasons, I would like to nominate Counselor Alex Jensen.
Thank you, counselor. We have a nomination for Alex Jensen. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to second that nomination for Counselor Alex Jensen for the position of operations.
Do you have any further comment?
Yes. I do agree that Counselor Jensen has the ability to bring a new perspective to this council and fresh ideas to this council. And I believe that his business background and his legislative background are going to lend itself to this position and to this body overall. So I look forward to working with him on this council, and I hope that you will support his nomination for this position.
Thank you. Any further comments on the nomination of Counselor Jensen? Any further nominations? All right. Seeing none, we will close down the nominations. One more rounder opportunity to speak on the nomination of Counselor Jensen. Counselor Breckie?
Yes, I just wanted to say to Councilmember Jensen that I had the privilege of serving on the operations committee my first year, during my first, very first year on the council, and I found it very beneficial. It really had helped me understand the internal operations, and at that time, I was a fresh new pair of old eyes. And so I think I brought some value to it, and I think you'll really enjoy it, so I wish you well on it. I do have a lot of operations issues because process is one of the things that I enjoy working on, always trying to make it better, more open, more streamlined, more efficient. So you'll probably be seeing me because I already am scheduled to appear before the comedian a few times. I appeared before and before, and I look forward to appearing before in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Any other comments? I'd ask the nominee if you have any comments this evening.
Thank you, Chair Selberg. I'll be brief.